Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to a unique Friday the 13th edition of Tempe's 2020 City Council Mayor Candidate Forum. Don't take any connotations out of that being Friday the 13th. Because tonight's activity is in just one evening, you'll get to hear and meet the candidates running for city council and the mayoral seats. We welcome you to the community room at the Tempe History Museum for a special two-part municipal election forum, beginning with a 90-minute dialogue with the five candidates seeking to fill the three available seats on the next Tempe City Council. Upon its conclusion, we will present a 75-minute forum featuring the two candidates for mayor. The forum is jointly sponsored in the public interest and as a community service by the Tempe Chamber of Commerce and the Arizona Republic. For complete transparency, you should know the sponsors would like you to be aware that the Chamber of Commerce independently endorses candidates, but for tonight's program, the two organizations have come together for the sole purpose of providing you the opportunity to make your own evaluations by getting to see and hear the candidates in a neutral and unbiased setting. My name is Vic Linoff, and I'll serve as moderator for tonight's forum. Your attendance here for the live telecast along with viewers at home is vital to a healthy political process. It demonstrates your strong interest in knowing more about who's seeking office and their positions on issues relevant to the community. The challenges Tempe faces have never been greater. The imperative of dynamic leadership and focused vision is crucial to our future. This is a particularly significant election, too. One of the three seats for city council is an open seat, which means when the new council is seated in July, it will have at least one new member. So getting to know the five contestants is vital to a good process, and that's why by the end of the evening, we hope that you'll come away with a greater knowledge of the candidates and their positions on issues so that you can make a more informed decision when you go to the ballot. Unlike the score of presidential debates over the past several months where political pundits analyze the outcomes, then rate and rank the candidates, we will leave all of that up to you. Following tonight's forum, there will be no talking heads telling you how to vote. [laughter] I'd like to thank our robust group of candidates for appearing here tonight facing you and our panel. Starting to your left is Randy Keating, Casey Close, Doreen Garland, and Joel Navarro. The sponsors have made every effort to assure that tonight's forum will be neutral, balanced, and provide each candidate an equal opportunity for expression of views, resulting in an evening that we hope is both informative and lively. And here's basically how it will work. Just before we got underway, the candidates' seating positions and initial speaking order were determined by a random drawing. That's the way it fell, and that's how they're seated here. After brief introductions, the sponsors will start off by posing a situational issue or question for each candidate to address or resolve. Unless otherwise stated, one minute will be permitted for a response. Our sponsor panel consists of Paulina Pineta, the Arizona Republic's Tempe reporter -- wave over there -- and Jihan Katrell, who's our Chair of the Chamber of Commerce. At any time, the sponsors may interject to request clarification or expansion of a response or pose a follow-up question. Following the initial sponsor queries and as time permits, we will strive to accommodate questions directly from the audience. In all cases, responses are limited to a minute. In the interest of fairness, we request that the candidates keep a close eye on the clock throughout the evening and conclude their remarks timely. Each round of responses will be in a random order determined by the moderator. Our official clock watcher is Erica Acorn, Tempe Chamber Business Development Specialist. Wave there so everyone can see you. And she has complete control with cards and a special device to let candidates know if time has expired. So let's start with a vision. As I said earlier, Tempe is at a crossroads, so we will begin by asking each candidate to share in this initial round in just 30 seconds or less their view of Tempe's future and how, as a city council member, they can influence that. And with that, we will start with Mr. Keating.
Thank you very much, Vic. I'd like to thank the Arizona Republic and the Chamber of Commerce for putting this event on. My name is Randy Keating, and the joke I always make, which many of you have heard -- I'm sure these guys are sick of it by now -- is I am in no way related to Charles Keating. So now we've got that off the way. The question is my vision for the city of Tempe moving forward. 15 seconds already? Wow, alright. So, you know, Tempe is a dynamic city. It's a growing city, and our urban core is projected to double, but in the next 20 years. We've got to do everything we can to make sure that we have the infrastructure and the housing stock in place and the available office space to meet those needs moving forward.
There we go. Casey Close. Yes. There you are.
Good evening. My name is Casey Close, and I'm running for Tempe City Council. My passion for advocacy was shaped by the Tempe community. I envision a Tempe that works for all residents, for all families. I will work to build sustainable communities, ensure Tempe is the best place for people of all ages to live, and give families the resources they need to thrive. I thank you all for coming or watching at home and look forward to a robust conversation and earning your support this evening.
And next is Ms. Garland.
Hi, my name is Doreen Garland, and I am running for Tempe City Council because I want to use the 30 years of leadership experience that I have to work for you when I get onto council. The three things that I think that I would like to work on and focus on for me is giving neighborhoods a voice. I'd like to work on increasing our affordable and workforce housing, and I want to work on ensuring our public safety. I will also work every day to be fiscally responsible to you with our tax dollars, to be open and transparent in everything that I do, and to work on improving our roads and our infrastructure. Thank you.
And with that, we move to Mr. Navarro.
Thank you, and thank you, Arizona Republic and the Tempe Chamber. This is awesome and a great event tonight. My vision for Tempe and moving forward is always just making sure that we're doing the right type of development, the right type of business for our citizens and our constituents, where we see money coming back to the community, money that can help neighborhoods and parks, streets. We have to really concentrate on our infrastructure. We've got to make sure that we're not behind the eight ball, but we're with the eight ball, so to speak, when our growth is constantly growing, so to speak. So, infrastructure growth and public safety, neighborhoods, and there we are.
Okay, I know that 30 seconds isn't much, so a minute will feel much better as we move along. And with that, we'll begin with the initial round of questions from our sponsors, starting first with Jihan Katrell from the Chamber.
Thank you, Vic. My first question is posed from McClintock Drive and Rural Road to downtown Tempe. Traffic congestion is on the rise. Getting to the office and classroom and the job site has been becoming increasingly difficult in our city. What can be done to address the notable increases in Tempe traffic?
And for the start of this round, we will begin with Ms. Garland.
Kind of get used to the microphone, sorry about that. So, one of the things that I think we need to look at with the traffic is our growth in the community and our development and how we are working to make changes and improve things in the city of Tempe. So, traffic for me, I understand, because I am driving from South Tempe usually into the city, and I do run into that a lot. The other thing I think about traffic is our public safety, and I always want to go back to public safety with that because I think about the traffic congestion that we could have and how our police and our fire departments are going to be able to get around that traffic itself. So, one of the things that I would like to do is to work better with the city of Tempe and with our developers, to find ways to spread our development, our building and our infrastructure use that we have, so we won't have so much traffic in the city. Sorry.
Thank you, and let's go to Mr. Keating.
Traffic is a big concern in the city of Tempe and has been for quite some time. Tempe is a rapidly growing city, and that isn't going to change. So I've actually served on several working groups around traffic mitigation and looking at multimodal solutions. How do we upgrade our existing infrastructure? Things like rapid bus transit, bus pullouts, you know, other multimodal and public transportation options. The city recently added our first orbit route south of the 60, which was an initiative that I supported. Anything we can do to move Tempeans from South Tempe to the downtown area and vice versa without having to get in their car and sit in that traffic is obviously a benefit to the city. I live off of Guadalupe and McClintock, and I deal with that traffic situation every single day. So I've been focused hard on what can we do to find common sense, pragmatic solutions to what is a problem that's not going to go away because Tempe is not going to stop booming, frankly.
Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. A lot of the concerns with traffic and how we're going to mitigate around it, and obviously with the growth that we have in the downtown Tempe, and we're going to have expected more growth with the new stadium district in that area coming up, we do have the potential of being the size of St. Louis, if not even bigger. So it is a concern. I think that we need to utilize areas and incentivize businesses around the outskirts that have the ability to have parking garages, utilizing those parking garages to alleviate the traffic within the downtown, utilizing bus, rapid transit, multiple source, either through electric scooters all the way up to the streetcar. We have bike lanes, incentivize bike lanes where they're appropriate, and make sure that our street design is being looked at. We can do a lot better possibly with our designs, our bus pullouts, or even making sure that we have the right right-of-way curveouts or cutouts to alleviate traffic so it doesn't back up. So, a combination of a lot of things.
Thank you. And finally, for this question, Ms. Close.
Thank you. The best way to cut down on traffic is to get people out of cars. We can do this by creating a fully multimodal transportation system, by improving our public transit with shaded transit centers, a tracking app for orbit and bus pullouts, creating safer bike and scooter infrastructure, and increasing trees next to sidewalks to allow for a more comfortable sidewalk commute.
Thank you. Next sponsor question from Paulina Pineta of the Arizona Republic.
Thank you, Vic. Candidates, Tempe has some of the Phoenix area's highest rents. What are specific steps you would take to alleviate this?
And for this round, we'll start with Ms. Close.
Thank you. Yes, we saw -- the Phoenix region did see a huge rent increase in 2018, and Tempe was not an exception. We need to construct new housing, and we need to look at housing differently. Right now, we are missing what's called the missing middle. These are units that are two to eight units, not single-family homes and not large apartment complexes. We can construct these, allow for these in some residential areas, allow for accessory dwelling units, or sometimes called granny flats, that allow for people to build a secondary unit on their property. They're great for seniors who can age in place, but age in a smaller development. So really, we just need to look at different housing, expanding our availability of housing, and then increasing development.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. Yeah, we definitely need to utilize the tools that we have as a city to incentivize developers to develop the type of housing that we do need. We need to be astute of where our housing and the type of housing that we have within our community. Obviously, we have a long area from South Tempe to North Tempe and within the downtown area. We're utilizing incentives like within the downtown area, where a high concentration of business and growth and college and everything like that, where the housing might be more expensive. We have designed or have worked with developers that are doing unique housing with having people rent rooms and sharing kitchens, to doing microhousing or microunits, utilizing land that we have to incentivize developers to do affordable housing, and also try to work with other developers to have -- utilize a percentage of the development to be affordability within perpetuity of the development. So there's a lot of incentives out there we can utilize.
Thank you. Mr. Keating.
Thank you very much. This is a supply problem. You know, Tempe ASU has doubled in size since I moved here. Tempe's population has gone up 30% since I moved here. We are lucky to be a city that people and businesses want to be in, and that is creating a unreasonable demand on our existing housing stock. And there's no real solution to bringing those prices down without adding more housing stock and adding it as fast as we can. As I mentioned earlier, our urban core is expected to double in the population in the next 20 years. If we don't add 15,000 new housing units in the next 20 years, we're going to fall behind just that growth. If we actually want to bring the prices down, we have to do even more than that. So, how I will continue to advocate for affordable housing in the city of Tempe is through creative solutions like the Tempe Maker District, which just brought in nearly 400 units of affordable housing along Broadway Road. And I've also served on two other working groups around affordable housing and gentrification issues in the city. So what we can do is try to mitigate the problems we have now while adding our stock as fast as possible.
Thank you. And finally, for this round, Ms. Garland.
So we don't have enough affordable housing and workforce housing available in our landlocked city. So there are a number of things that we can do, and I think I'm on the board for the Newtown Community Land Trust, and one of the things that we look at doing is bringing in more affordable housing. We are actually producing the micro estates, which are actually going to be a lot of fun. But one of the things I think that would be interesting to try to do is to try to contact some of the private landlords that we have here in the city of Tempe. I would love to try to grab these landlords together at a forum and talk to them about what they can do and what we can do to help incentivize them to offer their buildings, their properties, their houses, their rental availabilities for us to be able to use for affordable housing and to be able to use for the workforce, the students that are in our community. I think it's really important that we do try to incentivize because I think that's the best way we're going to be able to get them to work with us.
Thank you. Let's go back to our sponsors, Mr. Katrell, for another question from the Chamber.
Thank you again, Vic, and thank you, candidates, for your candid answers. In Arizona, we have term limits for our state elected officials, from the governor's office to the state legislatures. State elected officials are limited to a specific number of terms. Do you support term limits on the city -- on the Tempe City Council?
And this round with Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. Thank you. Right now, I do support how we have it, where the voters get to choose, where the voters get to actively be engaged within our community, within our council. I think there's something to be said about having council members that have some experience on council and have some knowledge. And I think it's always up to the voters to make sure that if that person is doing the job or not, to vote every year. You know, we always try to engage -- this community and this city has done extraordinary amounts of reach-out and making sure we get public information and make sure we're transparent and make sure that our information is being looked at and that our constituents have the abilities to talk to our council members. And with that, that's where you really have the ability to either judge a council member on the quality of work they're doing and what they're presenting and providing for the city.
Thank you. Ms. Close.
I do support term limits.
That was quick. Let's see. Ms. Garland.
I think we should leave this, at least my first initial thoughts, to leave this up to the voters. I think it's really important to put the job that we do in your hands, and you decide if we have done a good enough job for us to move forward. For me, I plan on getting on council and limiting myself to two terms because I'd like to see that I -- the all the ideas and the things that I would like to do for the city of Tempe for you, I would like to know that I could get all those things accomplished in the eight years and then be able to step off council and be able then to work in the nonprofit world or work with you to make other changes and see how the things that I have voted on and what I have done on council has affected you and myself. So for me, I would like to see that that stays with the program that we have, which is allowing you to tell us if you like us or not.
And finally, for this round, Mr. Keating.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Navarro and Ms. Garland. You know, Tempe has a long history of incumbents losing their races, and, you know, with our new campaign finance limits and our new system that we have, there isn't the advantage of incumbency as there once was. So it's not like an incumbent now is just an automatic winner in the city of Tempe. It's never been that way, frankly, because Tempe voters are educated and they follow the issues pretty closely and they make the decisions based on that. So with that, coupled with our new campaign finance limits, I don't believe that if there's an incumbent that should not be in office, they would be able to then get re-elected into office just based on the strength of that incumbent advantage. So, you know, I kind of agree with my colleagues down at the end of the table there. This is something the voters should decide, and I don't think term limits have served us well, particularly, you know, and some of the federal offices. We see it ends up being kind of a mercy rule, and I don't think it's really working out right now.
Thank you. And another question from Paulina at the Arizona Republic.
Thank you, Vic. This is from a Republic AZ Central reader. What can be done to save our neighborhoods from turning even more into rental communities? When a house turns into a rental, she says that almost always, the residents are under 25, there are multiple roommates, frequent parties, and cars line the street and on the lawns. The landscaping deteriorates and trash appears. If this continues and hits a tipping point, homeowners will sell. What strategy does Tempe have or can be developed to stop this? Can you address this both for long-term rentals and short-term rentals, also known as vacation rentals?
And for this round, let's start with Mr. Keating.
So there's a lot of rentals in the city of Tempe because there's a market for a lot of rentals in the city of Tempe, and that's because we have so many people trying to live in the city that cannot find housing in proximity to the campus. Unfortunately, the state legislature has really tied our hands as far as how we can deal with these Airbnb-type properties or these bad neighbor-type properties that convert their garages into multiple rooms to fit more kids into a smaller space. So what we have to do is make sure that there's available housing supply for those folks that want to live in Tempe, particularly in the downtown area, because that's what's happening. There's not enough housing at ASU right now to fit every ASU student. So they spill over into our communities, and that's natural. I mean, an ASU student's not going to want to live in Mesa or Gilbert or Chandler. They're going to live proximity to the campus. So we have to make sure there's a wide variety of housing options available to them, and if we have -- if we create that, if we meet that demand and that space, the market for these houses in our neighborhoods will decrease.
Thank you. Ms. Garland.
I think it's really important that we listen to you as neighbors to let us know what you think about these short-term rentals and VRBOs in your community. I think it's really important to hear your voice on that. One thing that we need to do as residents is we need to be supporting the bill that's going to be coming up in January that was brought to the state by Isella Blanc. It's SB 1350, and what that does is hopefully repeal the state restrictions that they've given the city. I think it's really important for us as a city to be able to have local control. We should be able to make the decisions on what we believe should be happening with short-term rentals or VRBOs, not the state. The state does not know us like we know us. So I think it's really important for us to work on repealing that and then work on this moving forward as a city and as residents of Tempe.
Thank you. Ms. Close.
I do not think people who rent their homes are necessarily bad neighbors, so I reject, I guess, the premise of the question, but we do need more housing. It is clear that we need additional housing to meet the demand in Tempe, and people who rent their homes are just as valuable as neighbors, as people who own their homes. I guess that's -- yeah.
All right, thank you. And finally, Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. Yeah, there's a lot, supply and demand in economics. You can put three to four people in a house and cut it up into different prices, and obviously, we need to have the ability within our downtown area, our campus area, to have that affordable housing for students to live in. Yes, that is one of the factors. But the other factor is what we're trying to add, probably the question is your appearance. We need code enforcement. We need code enforcement that's 24 hours, to be honest with you, because sometimes we're not catching people that are doing the wrong things between 8:00 to 4:00. We need it on the 8:00 to, you know, 10:00 o'clock at night when we can see the cars and traffics of the parties. Being a citizen, utilizing the systems that we do have, improving on the systems that we do have. We had a great program called the HIT program where we incentivize people to develop their houses, to make them bigger, to expand them so that they can afford a family, to have a walk-in closet. Those are things that change landscapes. They get families in, they get people here with kids, and they get our schools going again. We have great schools and great parks, and we can utilize incentives like the HIT program to get people to invest in those homes, and then we now have families live in there.
Thank you. And at this juncture, let us go to the audience for a question. Sir?
Single-family water usage is for household use and landscaping. Do the candidates support single-family water rates that exceed the rate established for landscaping?
Thank you. And for this round, let's begin with Ms. Garland.
Okay, so you're asking a question about water rates in reference to land into...
At the current time, water rates exceed landscaping rates, almost twice as much on the higher-tier rates.
Okay. So, one thing that I understand is that we do have higher water rates in the city of Tempe, and I know that there is a tiered system for that. I believe that it is something that we need to readdress. I live on a larger property that has big trees, and it's an old development, and the watering for those trees is high, and because I'm trying to keep those trees alive, I'm being penalized for that. So I do think that there is an opportunity for us to look at the tiered system again. I would hate for people to decide that they don't want to have their big trees because they're having problems paying for their water bills, because that is pretty high.
Thank you. Ms. Close.
I do support a tiered water rate system. I think that the Tempe city should be doing a lot to help encourage conservation now. It's clear that droughts are coming, and we need to be prepared for them when they arrive, when they're worse. So we should be working on conservation, and one way to encourage conservation is to have a tiered water rate system.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been utilizing the tiered system here for a few years, and I think that the advantage of it is, and we're always, as a council, need to look at the information, look at the data, and then see strategically, are we in the right place and make our adjustments? So with the tiered system, we have the ability to do that, but I know that within South Tempe, and I used to live in South Tempe, you have a bigger landscape, bigger yards, bigger trees. And the value of that is a heat island effect, too. We, you know, with those trees and with the grass and everything, it cools that area down. That's an advantage to not only the residents over there, but really the community. So there's a lot of yin and yang of, well, if you do this, we don't do this, and if we do that, we won't get this. But the long and short of it is, is we have the ability to look at those adjustments and make strategic movements to get us in the right place. And utilizing other efforts to conserve water is always on the table, and tax incentives, we've done that in the past, has been very important to get people to do that. So we're always looking for strategic ideas. Thanks.
Thank you. And finally, in this round, Mr. Keating.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the question. So the question is, do you support tiered water rates? My answer is absolutely yes. Your first gallon shouldn't cost as much, or should your 100,000th gallon should cost more than your first gallon, in my opinion. Now, do we want to have a situation where our neighbors in South Tempe, and again, I live at Guadalupe and McClintock, and I have a pool and I have trees and I have a lawn, so I understand the concern there? Do we want to create a system where we're penalizing those folks who are doing nothing but keeping up the appearance of their neighborhood? And the answer to that, of course, is absolutely not. So we actually did just revise our water rate system, and I believe that was an effort led by Councilmember Adams, which I was a big supporter of. And what it said is, look, if you're in the fifth tier, you're in the most expensive tier now, which is you're a 100,000-gallon-plus user, a month user. We will take you down to the fourth tier as long as you take one step to conserve water, whether that's a smart meter or it's a water audit. One of the services the city of Tempe provides, if you're willing to go through that process, will bring you down to a lower tier, because we do want to save water in the city of Tempe, but we don't want to penalize our neighbors either.
Thank you. Let's go to another question from the audience.
Thank you. So this is a kind of a two-part question, but it relates to the downtown and our historic properties. So I'd like to know what your thoughts are on historic preservation in the downtown area. In particular, in the downtown area, we have historic properties in other areas, but what your plan would be to preserve the integrity of our historic places. And as part of that, there is a move in the urban plan to raise the heights of buildings and exchange that for affordable housing, which could then impact actually the historic landscape as well. So knowing that we need affordable housing, but also knowing that by doing something like that, by raising the height, might impact the historic landscape, what are your thoughts about preservation and also the historic landscape and the height of buildings?
Thank you. And we'll let Mr. Navarro tackle this first.
All right. Thank you. No, I think we have to do everything we can to preserve our history and the look and feel of our downtown area, for sure. And the hard catch of that is the fact that there's property rights and the fact that there's laws that really kind of restrict us from trying to achieve that. We've been trying to look at overlays within those areas, and if those hold up and preserve the history within those downtown areas or those buildings, then I think we have something to stick on. Long and short of it is, we need to still have that communication, that developer, and work with those landowners to make sure that those buildings are preserved and they stay preserved. Do whatever we can to get those owners to put historical preservation on those buildings also. With the height, I'm kind of in favor still of, within the downtown area, the council still, because we only have a few spaces, it's case by case, and the council has input, along with the DRC, on what goes in and how it goes in. So I'm not really in favor of what's going on right now with the proposed changes, just in the downtown area.
Thank you. Mr. Keating?
Historic preservation is obviously very important for the city of Tempe. These are buildings that were built, you know, in the 1800s that we won't get back once they're gone. And we want to keep that sense of what Tempe is moving forward. And Tempe has changed a lot in your lifetime and my lifetime since I moved here. It's unbelievable. So what we need to do is make sure that we're preserving those spaces for future generations while managing the growth that is going to happen. We aren't going to be able to put the Tempe genie back in the bottle. We're not going to get to more affordable housing without adding stock. But the question is, you know, how do we do that and make sure we're maintaining those spaces? I hear your concern. You don't want buildings overshadowing, you know, our historical spaces, and I absolutely agree with that. We need setbacks. We need limits to how tall a building can be in conjunction to a historical property. That said, you know, our urban core is the spot to put density. And so we need to figure out a way that we work with our historical society and our neighbors to kind of find a path forward that everyone would kind of agree with. I do share Councilmember Navarro's concerns over the proposed plan that has been brought forward.
Thank you. Ms. Close?
Hi. I do support historic preservation within downtown Tempe, and I think it does need to be balanced with our need for housing and particularly affordable housing. We don't have enough affordable housing, and it's very obvious with raising or rising costs of living here in Tempe. But we should balance that with historic preservation, because these buildings are important to our culture.
Thank you. And Ms. Garland?
So I support historic preservation. I have actually been to a couple of the commission meetings, and I really enjoyed listening to the hard work that they're all doing to preserve the buildings that we have. Regarding the urban core master plan, it's the bonus plan that I think you were talking about. I am the chair of the Neighborhood Advisory Commission, and we were actually listening to a presentation on this just a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that I had a little bit of a problem with is that they want to give four different types of incentives to builders to be able to give them that extra space that they want to have. And I think that's really wonderful, but for me, the question that I asked, one of them is affordable housing, one is sustainability, one is open space, and I can't remember what the fourth one is. But they want to give these ideas that then the builder can come in and pick those. For me, if we are really trying to work on affordable housing, then we would just offer, ask them, incentivize them, suggest to them affordable housing. But I do have a problem with that bonus plan, and I just think we need to have more information about it.
Thank you. And just before we go back to our, you want to shut your mic off? It's an interesting system. Before we go back to the sponsors' questions, if members of the audience would like to ask their questions, Sukie's over here in the corner. Let her know, and she'll call on you, and then you'll come on down and be seated. But for this next round, let's start with Paulina Pineda from the Arizona Republic.
Thank you, Vic. This is also based on a reader question. How is the Tempe City Council doing with the budget? Are you comfortable with spending levels, or do you see a need to ratchet it back? If so, what areas of spending concern you and why?
Ms. Close?
I think our city budget reflects, need to reflect our city's priorities, and this means funding programs that help childrens, help residents' lives, help our schools, help affordable housing, and address homelessness here in Tempe. And so I'm not necessarily concerned with the level of spending. I think that it's as long as the budget is balanced, we are able to spend the money. It's more about allocating to our priorities.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro?
Thank you. Being on the council and weathering the storm in 2008 and then coming up to the times that we are now, I do always have caution in how we do things and how we achieve things. The first thing we have to do, we have to make sure we're taking care of our infrastructure, making sure that we're taking care of the basic needs that our residents are asking for for the city of Tempe, our public safety, our public works, our streets, making sure that our sewer systems, our trashes are picked up. So those always have to be a concern to be looked at. And the thing is, we can't get behind the eight ball on this, especially with our growth and our development. We have to have police on the street. We have to have firefighters on the street. We have to have our public works doing their jobs, too. So we need to spend wisely. And yes, there are programs out there that we need to strategically invest in, and that makes economic sense for the city, because programs that have strategic economic grasp brings jobs, brings other needs within our cities, and that brings more money within our coffers.
Thank you. Ms. Garland?
So I was looking at the business survey that was just done for the city of Tempe and the community survey, and one of the things that you find that's common in there is that they believe that it's, everybody believes it's really important for us to be working on our roads and public safety. And those are two things that I think are really important, and it's not just the roads, but it's the curbs and the medians, depending on if you were looking at the community survey or the business survey. So as far as the budgets go, that's something I would like to look at. I don't think there's actually a problem with those, but I think that we do need to have emphasis on that and our public safety. The other thing is, every board and commission that I have been on, and if you look on my website, you'll see there's a whole list, I've always, our budgets have always worked in the black. We have never gone into the red. And when I get on city council, if I get on city council, I will work to make sure that we are always working within a balanced budget to support our community.
Thank you. Mr. Keating?
Thank you very much. Every single budget the city of Tempe passes is balanced. The city of Tempe does not go into any debt to pay for any of its liabilities. The city of Tempe, I always say, show me what you spend your money on, and I'll show you your values. The city of Tempe spends more per capita than any other city in the region on human services. So the city of Tempe is already doing more than our fair share as far as addressing some of the social issues that the valley and the country are really struggling with. Over the last few years, we've accelerated and put big investments in some underserved areas in the city, things like parks and roads that went through decades of deferred maintenance due to the Great Recession. So if the question is, do I think the city of Tempe has a spending problem, I would say no. I think the city of Tempe spends all of its money on very smart and very needed investments, and I don't think there's anything, I know how hard it is to get a new program through, because we're already spending our money. There's nothing really there that's wasteful or really could be cut. So I'm very proud of the way the city of Tempe spends its money, and we'll continue to support the balanced budget approach that we've had.
Thank you. And I should apologize and have made this announcement at the beginning of the forum. There are five candidates that are running this time for the city council. And the one that is not on the stage tonight is Mark Norman. And that's only because he was involved in an auto accident a few days ago, not of his making. And although he didn't sustain serious injuries, he does have a lot of pain and discomfort and really feels bad about not being at this forum tonight. So our thoughts and prayers are for his speedy recovery. And again, I should have made that known at the beginning, but I just want everyone to know that that's the reason that he's not here tonight. Okay, to our sponsors and the chamber and Mr. Cottrell.
Thank you, Vic. A growing number of Tempe residents are taking note of the number of city decisions being made outside of the public eye. In your opinion, does the city of Tempe have a transparency problem, and if so, what should be done about it?
And let's begin this round with Ms. Garland.
I don't know about the transparency problem, but I do know that it's really important that all meetings are open to the public and the public knows about them. Our council meetings, our commission meetings, we always publicize those early. I think our, the working group meetings, I think need to, I think those are the ones that I've heard that need to be opened up a little bit more, did more transparency. But I think it's really important for us to be transparent. You need to know what we're doing. You need to know what the council's doing. You need to know what the city's doing, not just on a council level, but on a commission level, on a board level. You should be able to pull up our minutes and the agendas for any activity that we're doing and know exactly what we're doing and know that you have an opportunity to come and let us know your opinions or your thoughts on those issues. And I think transparency is really super important, and I will really work hard on transparency.
Thank you. Ms. Close?
Transparency is very important in public government. It is important, I think, to educate citizens about the opportunities they have to get involved, whether it's a tender meeting, it's not possible for a lot of people who have jobs. So being able to comment online, comment ahead of time, send emails, feel that they have a communication with the council so that they can get their opinions out without having to cut into their, you know, busy lives. For most people, it's about getting food on the table at the end of the day. It's not about coming to a city council meeting, but they care a lot, because the city council meetings do affect, the decisions made at city council meetings affect people's real lives.
Thank you. Mr. Keating?
Thank you. The question is, do I think the city of Tempe has a transparency problem? My answer would be no. I'd be interested to know what decisions you feel were made out of the public eye. But, you know, we have, we're very proud of our public process. We're very proud of our open meetings, and we're proud of our stakeholder involvement when we make these decisions. One thing I would disagree with is I don't believe working group meetings should be open to the public, because that's kind of an opportunity for council members and staff to kind of have candid conversations rather than political conversations. So could we do more to involve our stakeholders? Yes. Could we bring those stakeholders into those meetings? Absolutely. But do we want a room full of people pushing for one issue and bringing pressure on council members that are political animals, you know, to a policy that they might not necessarily agree that would be best for the city? So I would not open up working group meetings to the public, but every other meeting absolutely is open to the public already, and they're publicized, and everyone knows about it well in advance. So I think the city of Tempe does a really good job of communicating what's going on at city hall with our citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro?
Thank you. Yeah, I tell you what, we do an outstanding job, in my opinion, but I'll tell you this, I'm always challenging staff to make sure that we're doing something better. You can't just say we're good right now, because things change. You got to get the attention of people, and you always try to figure out what's the best way to get information out, using social media, using the newsletter and the water bill, using commercials, you know, if we have more money, maybe better commercials, utilizing Channel 11. I know it's not a sexy channel, but there's a lot of good stuff on it. If you guys actually look at it late at night, I was surprised. But we need to program that stuff. We need to like have a guide of what's on that, on that channel. So there's some sensible changes that we can make that make real sense for our community. But the thing is, you can't let your guard down. You always have to improve your communication. I get so frustrated at work, because I have to send out 1,500 emails, and I only get about 500 of them read. So not everyone is reading certain mediums. So the challenge is, how do we get all that information out there? And I think we keep on challenging our staff to do that, but I think we're doing a great job.
Thank you. And let's see, for this round, let us go to the audience. Yes, sir?
The city of Tempe currently has a Section 8 program, which provides a subsidy for low-income housing for people that are eligible, qualified. There's a one-to-three-year waiting list to even become eligible last time I checked. What would you do to expand funding for the Section 8 program, including the use of city funds?
Thank you for that question. And for this round, let's begin with Mr. Keating.
Thank you. So Section 8 fundings come from the federal government, and unfortunately, the federal government hasn't been very interested in funding those types of services ever since the Great Recession. It's even gotten worse since the latest election. So what the city of Tempe could do outside of Section 8 is explore options, of course, using city funding or using tax incentives, to get more permanent supportive housing into the city of Tempe. I mean, it's a difference, but it's kind of a distinction without a difference. As long as we're able to get folks into the housing that they need, I think that's adding a lot of value to the city. So what I would do would be try to find opportunities, whether it's in, you know, zoning overlay districts like the Tempe Maker District or the Smith Industrial Corridor. How do we bring in the kind of permanent supportive housing that the city needs, and how do we find creative ways to pay for it?
Thank you. Ms. Garland?
So you're talking about six or eight housing money, which comes from the government. So there's only a specific amount of money that we can get for the city of Tempe. I think what we could do with the city is to try to find more money to help people. I'm not sure how we would work that through in the budget, but I know that there are organizations that we can go to to kind of help and try to bring more stakeholders together to try to understand the value of trying to find more housing for the residents of Tempe. I spent last week talking to the director at U-MOM and tried to understand a little bit about housing from them, and they have some really great ideas. So I think it's maybe trying to bring stakeholders together, residents together, people in the city of Tempe together, along with councilor staff, to try to come up with more creative ways, and bringing in people like the director of U-MOM, who has some wonderful ideas and who's been doing and working with us for years.
Thank you. Let us go to Casey Close.
Yes, so I agree that... The Section 8 housing waitlist is too long, and that shows that we have too many people who are in need of housing and in need of affordable housing, and that is why affordability is one of my number-one priorities. We need to increase affordable housing. We can't command, I guess, that the federal government fund Section 8 to the amount that they should, but we can do a lot to increase affordable housing opportunities here in Tempe, having creative solutions to what affordable housing looks like and what our housing makeup looks like, to partnering with developers and giving, you know, providing incentives when permanent affordable housing is added to projects.
Thank you. And Mr. Navarro?
Thank you. Yeah, Section 8 housing, yes, we have it in Tempe. Can we expand it? We hope to. We hope to get funding for it. Can we utilize programs within the city and utilize whatever funding we can find to help find affordable housing? Yep, we use Newtown. We use Chicala, Porla Casa. The city tries to buy land whenever we can to find and utilize that land for affordability. So yeah, we use every opportunity we can to find that affordability for our residents. The thing I wanted to share, though, is we have to be a balanced community. And also, the market dictates a lot of this stuff, too. It's funny, because I was talking to a bunch of developers and how the trends on them are now, we need to make more affordability, because they were making a lot of market rate type of things or higher-end stuff. And now they're finding themselves, the market is not there anymore. The market is now affordability. So the market is actually working itself, too. But we also need to make sure that the city of Tempe has a unique stock of housing. In fact, we probably have it better than what people think in terms of affordability within our city. And that has been studies done on a national level. So we're there. We're getting there.
Thank you. And another question from the audience. Yes, ma'am?
Tempe has received 12% gaming monies for nearly two decades. And I'm curious to know is how will you support gaming as the compact is up for renewal real soon?
Thank you. And let's start with Ms. Close.
Good evening. I think that it's important if we, when we have a compact that, you know, we support each other. So it's important for us to support tribe, support people who live here in Tempe, who are tribal members, because not everyone lives on the reservation who is a member. So it's important to have resources for folks who live off the reservation, who live within our bounds and also to help have a relationship with the tribes.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro.
Yes, to support gaming money. The benefits are extraordinary. I mean, they're, they're really a benefit to the city of Tempe when we tie, when we try to pilot programs or we're trying to fund programs that, that are not quite there. The gaming money has been very strategic in keeping things afloat and alive. CARE 7 depends on gaming money. And that's a huge benefit for our people with a variety of, of other concerns besides medical, mental health, finding homes, finding homelessness, whatever it may be. So it has a real advantage on helping our citizens out and the citizens, not only just within Tempe, but that come into Tempe. So there's great advantage of gaming money for a lot of opportunity for our citizens to make Tempe a more unique place, but also to keep the funding going as we do balance our budget. And we have to utilize every resource we can. So it's, it's very strategic.
Thank you. Ms. Garland.
Yatay. So I do think it's really important that we support the gaming contract. And I have, I think it's really important because I don't think a lot of people understand and realize how much money and how many services that we use, all of us use in the city of Tempe, that has been supported in some way by the gaming money. And I think it's really important that we continue to do that. So it's a really good question. I did, I have met with the president at the Salt River Pima Community. And that was one of the questions that I wanted to ask. I didn't get a chance to ask that yet, but yes, I would definitely support that. Thanks.
Thank you. And then on to our sponsors once again. Paulina at the, I'm sorry, I left you out, didn't I?
It is a tough question, but I, but I will definitely be happy to answer it. And I say that not as a guy who won 1,400 bucks when the Bills beat the Patriots over Thanksgiving, but, but as a city council member. I absolutely support gaming laws. And, you know, Tempe is very lucky and fortunate to benefit from those. We receive, I think it's $2 or $3 million a year from the Salt River Indian, Pima Indian community due to the, the gaming revenues that they're able to generate. And we spend that money on human services. So, you know, I think, not only do I think it's appropriate and needed in our community, but it also does a lot of good for that community as well as it brings in money that would otherwise not come to that area. So I think it's one of those things that, you know, that's a rising tide that lifts the boats all around it. So I think we would, it'd be looking at gift horse, horse in the mouth to now say, we're not supportive of renewing that compact. So hopefully that gets done. And I do appreciate the support that we get from the gaming revenues.
Thank you. And my apologies for the omission. I just got this complete mathematical chart to figure out the rotation. And then I'm getting old, so I hope people will be generous in their judgments. Okay, now to the chamber. Or, yeah, let's go, start with the chamber and Mr. Cottrell.
Thank you again, Vic. Economic development is consistently cited by voters and businesses as one of the top local issues. Please name your top two economic development goals, if elected, or your top two, excuse me.
And for this round, let us begin with Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, keeping what we're doing right now alive, so to speak. You know, I think the council, even before I got on, has done some strategic things to get us on the map. The lake is the number one thing. And those opportunities have created jobs, created people and attraction for our community and especially within the downtown area, attracting bio, bioscience, attracting financial institutes, a number of State Farm. So you can see that we have the ability and we're, and how we're positioned within the valley. Strategically, we are, we are the, the city that every city wants to be. And I think that attraction has to keep on going. And with our economic team and, and giving them the benefits to get out there, to get high-paying jobs within our communities, to make sure that we're attracting the right people with the right opportunities for our community. And then we need partners within our community, too. So strategically, we got to keep on doing what we have been doing and just make sure that we're getting the benefit back to our residents.
Thank you. Mr. Keating.
My economic development priorities are pretty simple and I've kind of spoken to them already tonight is, look, we have got to add more housing, more diverse housing stock to the city of Tempe. We have got to add more office space to the city of Tempe because now office space is getting to be quite expensive because Tempe has the lowest vacancy rate in the valley as far as a Type A office space goes. So we need to be able to add to our existing supply while managing the negative impacts of that growth. So we're looking at things like traffic, we're looking at public transportation, looking at things like public safety and even some human services issues have kind of fallen that as well. Another thing that the city of Tempe needs is we need more hotel rooms. We need more conference space and we need more public transportation options. So I think over the next, you know, hopefully next council term, in the next 20 years, the question is going to be, how did Tempe handle that moment at that time? Our time in the sun isn't going away. We have to make sure that we're utilizing it while the sun is shining on us and making sure we're leaving a Tempe 10, 20 years from now that is still functional and still able to accept that kind of opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Garland.
So the, I think the biggest thing is just wanting to bring more jobs. And, and that creating more jobs is bringing in more businesses here. One of the things that's really important to me is to be able to, is to be able to bring in more small businesses. Small businesses are the backbone of our community. And I think it's really important that we work and that I would work really hard to try to bring more small businesses in, shop local, buy local. And I think that would really make a difference to our community. And, you know, right now, we try to do our best to, to bring those businesses in, but I think we could work a little bit harder and I'd like to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Close.
I think I have said it before, but I'll say it again. Housing is the number one priority for developing right now. We need more housing. We need to address affordability. And when we have housing and construction, we need to make sure that those are good-paying jobs so that people who are building this housing and building our roads can live here in Tempe. And then we should prioritize becoming more fully a 20-minute city so that people have the businesses that they need around them. So within a 20-minute transit, a four-mile bike ride or a one-mile walk, people can get the services they need to promote a more walkable, livable city.
Thank you. And back to our sponsors and the Arizona Republic. Paulina.
Thank you. Tempe has a very successful preschool program called Tempe Pre. Would you support a sales tax to keep the program going and growing next year and why?
And for this round, let's start with Ms. Garland.
So I have raised four children and those four kids went through pre-K. So I understand the importance of having children in pre-K classes. I think it helps them to be more successful. I'm, I would be more mindful of wanting to find out, first of all, how the program has been going and how it's, if it's successful. I think that's the end of next year. I think this, we're in the second year of the pilot program. But I would probably look at more trying to find if we can find grant, grant funding for that program instead of continuing to, instead of taking it out of the city budget.
Thank you. And Ms. Close.
Tempe Pre is a fantastic program. We know that preschool has emotional, educational benefits for children. And these are families who couldn't afford to send their children to preschool otherwise. I would be in support of a sales tax increase to pay for Tempe Pre. Tempe should be a leader as a child-friendly city. We should be the place where your children can grow up. We should be the place where people want to raise a family and can raise a family. And so I'm in favor of Tempe Pre.
Thank you. Mr. Keating.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm very proud of Tempe Pre and I'm very proud to be leading the working group that's looking at how do we, how do we preserve and expand our current system. In fact, we actually just introduced a sliding scale last year, which cut the cost of the program in half and made it so we could run it for another couple of years as we look for a permanent funding source. So we are looking at grants. I just spoke to Naleo last weekend around this space. And what my, the topic of my presentation was all about is the secondary and tertiary economic benefits of the preschool program. Parents are able to go back to work, they're able to go back to school. They're not spending so much money on childcare anymore. So we're, we're seeing real economic benefits to that program. So what we need to do is find a way to permanently fund it. Am I going to say I'm going to support this or that right now? No, because I'm on that working group and we're looking for ways to be able to do that. But really, all options are on the table. And I think it is important that Tempe Pre be continued in the city of Tempe.
Thank you. And let us go back to the audience. I've lost track. Are you next? Yes, sir. Oh, have I admitted Mr. Navarro? Yeah, I did it again. My apologies.
No, no problem. I was going to stay out of it.
That's why I'm not running.
No. Yeah, hot question. You know, I, it, I'm part of the working group. I'm very proud of the pre-K program, economic benefits, educational benefits, benefits to the parents that need to have the ability and time to get back to work. A lot of data out there, a lot of information, quality pre-K. I mean, this is just not drop your kid off. This is quality pre-K and that's the only thing I would stand for. But it has to be pre-K for every Tempe resident. And maybe it's a sliding scale, but it has to be quality, high-quality pre-K and has to have benefits for everybody within Tempe. Every family member that has kids that can utilize that because the benefits in the long run outweigh just everything, in my opinion. But there's also a tie to it with mental health. I think we need to do more studies with mental health because pre-K is tied to that. And there's more to this conversation. So I think we need to look into it, but I think there's some pulls with mental health. And I think if that's the pull, we might have something.
Thank you. I guess I'm so busy trying to engage everybody, I forget how many we've got on our panel. All right, now to the audience. Yes, sir.
As all of you should know, the leaders of the world have been meeting in Madrid over the last two weeks to address the serious issue of climate change. The general agreement is that not enough is being done. Everyone needs to do more. The world is on the wrong direction despite all the proclamations. Of course, the city of Tempe has recently adopted its own, well, not its own. The leaders followed the others in adopting a climate action plan. So I'd like to ask each of you, what are you, do you support the climate action plan? What are you going to do to make sure it's implemented? And what more are you willing to do in order to make sure we address this various, very serious issue?
Thank you. And we'll let Mr. Keating tackle that first.
I absolutely support the climate action plan. I was proud to vote in favor of it when it passed the city council unanimously. I was also proud to serve on the working group that brought Tempe the most ambitious renewable energy goal in the state. Tempe will be carbon neutral by 2035 thanks to the work of, you know, Vice Mayor Kubi and myself. And I believe Mayor Mitchell was on that working group as well. So I'm very proud of the steps the city of Tempe is taking. How do we implement, implement the climate action plan? Well, we work with the staff. We work with Brayden Kay, our sustainability director. We work with our stakeholders and our utility companies to make sure that the goals that we set are coming to fruition and to make sure that we pass, we pass the blueprint to make something happen here. Now it's on us to make sure we're, we're going down that road. So the clean energy standard, for example, was something we did hand-in-hand with APS and SRP. We came to them and said, look, we want to do something big here. And they said, you know what? We think we're going to be able to do that for you because they're, they're bringing a new solar plant online in Apache Junction. So it's, it's about working with the folks in that space and about working within our budget constraints to make sure we're really walking the walk in this regard.
Thank you. Ms. Garland.
So being Native American, my, my grandmother on the Navajo reservation would always talk about the importance of caring for Mother Earth. And so I've been hearing this since I was little, first in Navajo a little bit and obviously the rest in English. But it's really important that we do take care of our, our climate. And to your question, I'm on the Neighborhood Advisory Commission and we, I came to the one, the last council meeting to, to let them know that the Neighborhood Advisory Commission was in support of the climate action plan. And I am now going to, actually on Monday, meet with the Sustainability Commission to see what else I can do and our commission can do to move this forward. I think our portion of it is going to be more of neighborhood outreach and working with the neighborhoods to get them to understand what we're doing, what the climate action plan is and how they can take a part, more of a part in that climate action plan itself. The part of that, that, that we are doing in the city of Tempe that's most important to me is our Water Smart Program. It's an incredible Water Smart Program that the city of Tempe has. You know, water is life. So that program, I would like to see get shared around the community much more than it is right now.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. Yes, I do support the climate action plan. And I do support the steps that the city has done. And in fact, the steps that we have achieved and we're going to achieve, but then we're going beyond that. I think there's always more that we can do. Me having kids and hearing from them and, and their concerns and my little one especially, it's, it's, it's really, you know, those are the things that really grip you. And it's like, what are we doing and what are you doing as a leader? So we have an opportunity as a leader to make some big strides. And I'm part of a working group with Councilmember Kubi on looking at tree canopy and other carbon-neutral ideas that we can do to implement within our city. But yes, we, we have to try whatever resources we have within our city to get to our goals and beyond.
Thank you. Ms. Close.
The climate crisis is the existential threat of our time. And I believe all governments should be working on climate. I'm supportive of the climate action plan. I believe that we need to address environmental justice in the next climate action plan. We need to work to improve urban tree canopy, to promote walkability and combat urban heat island effect. We should improve public transportation, promote walkable housing development, particularly near transit to decrease resident reliance on cars. Create resilience hubs to prepare for rising temperatures, including natural disasters, and promote water conservation now to prepare for future droughts.
Thank you. One more from the audience. Who's next?
Thank you. I've been a resident of Tempe since 1979. And I grew up going down to Mill Avenue and seeing a vibrant arts community. And one of the things that I remember most was a lot of locally-owned stores, bookstores, cafes and things like that. Over the decades, we've seen a lot of those supplanted by larger, big-box organizations, big-box companies, really causing the rents and the prices of the real estate to go up, leaving little options for the small proprietors to be able to continue to operate. What, if any, do you see the role of the, the city council in assisting local businesses in really staying competitive in a non-competitive environment against those large-box organizations?
Thank you. Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. Yeah, I love the question. You know, there's things that the city can do and it's working with the DTA also. And we pride ourselves on the mom-and-pop stuff that we have within our downtown area and around our community. And one of the things I've been trying to work on is, is increasing the walkability around the downtown, utilizing venues to play live music, encouraging us sponsoring and recognizing people that, that have produced live music out and around Tempe. These are things that are attractive to our downtown area. When we talk about street closures is cutting costs that don't make sense for, if someone wants to do an extension of business within, on their property, we want to make it friendly. We want them to do those extension of business. But we also want to do benefits for us. We have a great, every Sunday, when the weather is cool, Farmer's Arts. We need to expand those things because those programs bring people here. And those, when people are here, they're shopping in those stores. So there's creative ways that we can utilize a variety of different resources to lower those costs and to work with the DTA to help advertise those things.
Thank you. Mr. Keating.
Thank you. Great question. You know, the rents in downtown Tempe are very expensive, particularly along Mill Avenue. And it becomes cost-prohibitive for those mom-and-pop-type businesses to be able to operate, you know, at what is such a desired area. So again, you know, I, I feel that this is a supply problem that we have in the city of Tempe. We need to work with organizations like Downtown Tempe Authority, like Local First Arizona, like the Tempe Chamber of Commerce to figure out how we can recruit some of these businesses. like the Tempe Chamber of Commerce to figure out how we can recruit some of these businesses to come to Tempe and how do we preserve the businesses that we do have currently in Tempe? We got a lot of, of, you know, unique local businesses in the downtown area, like Changing Hands, and we have House of Tricks, you know, Julian Wright's Pedal House, one of my favorite spots. You want to catch me there a little bit later? So how do we, how do we make sure that we're working with our stakeholders and the organizations that, that run our downtown and, and do these, these kinds of actions to make sure that these businesses are not only coming to Tempe, but the ones we have can stay in Tempe?
Thank you. Ms. Close.
As we increase housing, we're going to see an increase in the necessity for other small businesses, other services. More people means more people need to get their haircut. More people want to go out to eat. More people want to, you know, utilize the city. And so I think with more mixed-use development, we will see places for small businesses to thrive in, you know, downtown, in different areas and places that, you know, developments that currently don't exist. But we will see shortly, and we should work with small businesses as we have those business, or have these developments come in and then work with DTA to make sure that our small businesses can thrive here in downtown Tempe.
Thank you. Ms. Garland.
I think we need to continue to work with the chamber to help bring more businesses into the Chamber of Commerce because they do a really great job of promoting the businesses that they have. I also think that we need to work with the DTA, Downtown Tempe Authority, to help them and support them and the businesses that they support in downtown Tempe. It's also really important for us to recognize that those small mom and pop stores are the ones who are really the ones who are turning around and supporting our community. They're the ones who are giving the $25 gift certificate for fundraisers or for raffles or they're supporting our soccer teams and our baseball teams. So it's really important for us to recognize those businesses and then to turn around and also go downtown and support them so that with the higher increase of the rates that they have that they're paying, that we can help them to survive because we want them to survive. And then as a council member, to be working really hard that we try to work, work with them for retention, to keep them here in the community and then actually try to help them expand their businesses as well.
Thank you. And since they're footing the bill, we will go back to our sponsors and let's start with the Arizona Republic.
Thank you, Vic. Tempe prides itself on its social services. Still, I hear from readers, it's not enough. What would you do in terms of homelessness and addressing issues as perceived feelings of safety at city parks?
Thank you. And for this round, let's begin with Ms. Close.
So first, I believe in the inherent worth and dignity of every person. And because of this, I think it's important to take a really compassionate approach for people who do not have homes. We have to work to expand affordable housing and workforce housing, implement creative housing solutions to ensure people who work in Tempe can continue to live in Tempe. We need to ensure that we have a strong support system when people hit a rough patch in their lives. Too many people are one $500 disaster away from losing their house, not being able to pay rent. And then we need to utilize a housing-first, but not housing-only approach to develop relationships and connect with people so that we can connect people without homes to the valuable services, especially people who have aged out of the foster system and people who are dealing with mental health issues. As far as the parks go, I think, oh, I almost had time. We don't, okay, I'm sorry.
The clock runs. Thank you. Mr. Navarro.
Thank you. Yeah, there's definitely a lot of programs that we have to look at. I mean, this is not a local issue, it's a regional issue. We need to work with our regional partners to come up with some great solutions. And we are doing that. And our city managers are actively doing that to address some of those problems. But one of the key things is, we have to look at where can you, when we talk about parks and safety and we talk about homelessness and we're talking about a variety of things. One of the things is adapting programs like community paramedicine, where first responders actually have the approach to tackle those issues better than just going to an emergency room. Get them to the right locations, communicating with the silos that have been hindering getting people to the right places. But when we look at the parks, we need to also look at the fact that our residents want to use those parks. Our residents value the parks. But we also need to make sure that people of homelessness, they are sleeping in safer areas because, or visible areas because they want to stay safe. So we do really need to look at what, what that looks like to have a shelter type of system and where that shelter system is going to be located at.
Thank you. Ms. Garland.
So I, I do like the Housing First program that, that is available, that brings people in, gets them into their home and then wraps services around them to try to help them out. I also think we need to continue to do a really good job that we are doing to fund human services and then understand that homelessness is a regional issue. It's not just an issue that we deal with here in the city of Tempe. So we need to make sure that we are working with other cities to fix this problem. The other thing is, we need to be, again, I think we need to be working with organizations and bringing other people in, like you, Mom, and ask them, what have they been doing across Maricopa County that has been working? Find the things that we can solve, like solve the solvable. What part of the homeless situation can we actually solve and work toward that and then use that as a stepping stone to continue to do other things? Regarding the parks, I would like to understand more about the Park Ranger Program that the city of Tempe used to have so that we can, my understanding is that the Park Ranger Program worked really well because they were able to build relationships with the people that were in the park and then be able to help them with services. And I'd like to see that, if we can get that to continue.
Thank you. Mr. Keating.
Thank you very much. As far as homelessness goes, I've worked on a couple of different working groups around homelessness. One was the Affordable Housing Working, not Affordable Housing, excuse me, the Housing First Working Group. And essentially what we found is, due to the nature of, of the problem, it's cost prohibitive for Tempe to house the regions homeless. So what we did is, we went to Mesa, we went to Phoenix, and we said, look, we need to have some sort of regional effort here. And that led to our city manager, Andrew Ching, engaging his counterparts in neighboring cities to create a regional task force to how can we pool our resources to deal with this common problem that's happening not only in Tempe but across the nation. As you may or may not know, Maricopa County's homelessness spiked by 24% over just the last year. As far as parks go, we need to make sure that Tempeans who are affording the bills for parks are able to enjoy their parks. And we are a compassionate city. We're the only city in the region that doesn't criminalize homelessness when you're, when you're sleeping in our parks. And I'm proud of that. But we also have to make sure that our parks are available to members of the community who want to use them. So I have been very supportive of out-of-the-box solutions like the G4S security that we have, there's a lot of hyperbole that got thrown around, around that, but our neighbors have been very pleased with the outcomes.
Thank you. And now to the chamber and Mr. Cottrell.
Thank you. Tempeans pay higher property taxes, sales taxes and rental taxes than its surrounding communities. In your opinion, are Tempe residents overtaxed?
Thank you. And let us begin with Mr. Navarro.
I'm Mike. Yeah. When you look at the comparisons with cities and the services that every city has to provide, we are actually right in the middle. So when you talk about trash, water, waste, all those services, every, every city varies in different angles. Mesa maybe have lower property tax, but they have higher rates in other areas. So the thing is, is we're balanced with, with all our services within the city, providing the proper resources and benefits to our residents. So with, with what we have right now, I think that we're probably right in the middle where, where it's in a city as dynamic as ours and with the growth and with the popularity and with the vibrancy and the attractiveness where people want to be, we're actually right in the middle of the ballpark where I think is very smart.
Thank you. Ms. Close.
So 20% of your property tax goes to the city, most of it goes to schools. And so I think it's really important that we continue to fund schools. We have, you know, better schools than neighboring cities. That's why people move here. That's why people use our services. So it's important that we continue to fund those things. And Tempe voters, time and time again, opt in to paying more so that we can fund our schools because children are incredibly important.
Mr. Keating.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Navarro that I think if you take a really high look, a higher view of the taxation landscape in the city of Tempe, we are kind of right there in the middle, you know, with some, you know, outliers here and there. And, you know, I think if you average it all out, you know, we're kind of in the mean for the region. So I guess the question is, do I think, do I think Tempeans are overtaxed? As a Tempean, I would say no, but I would defer to Tempeans on how they felt about that. So I'll look at the body of evidence that I have for that. Tempe has never failed to pass a bond override. So Tempeans have never failed to tax themselves to make sure that Tempe schools are better than our, than our neighboring city schools because obviously the legislature isn't interested in funding our schools. Tempeans just made permanent our, our arts tax to make sure that we're bringing arts and arts amenities to, to the city. So I think if Tempeans felt they were overtaxed, we wouldn't see our bond overrides pass 70% of the vote. We wouldn't see our arts tax extension pass. I think it was like 69% of the vote. So no, I think Tempe is doing a good job as far as the, the services we're bringing back for the dollars that Tempeans are paying for.
Thank you. Ms. Garland.
I don't think that we are being overtaxed. I do think that we are doing, being good stewards of the money and that we receive with those tax monies. I think there are, again, as Councilman Keating just said, there are a lot of services and that the city of Tempe provides, but also like he just said, the, the arts tax was, was passed by a significant number. And I think the city of Tempe, you as residents, when things like that come up, you can vote those things down, but you haven't. You've been very supportive of the city of Tempe, the decisions that the Tempe council has made and moving forward. I don't see that as being too high.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone else has been watching the clock, but I have and I apologize to our audience members for not being able to get there. We're very close to the end. And we want to allow time for each candidate to provide a closing statement or get in something that they've been dying to stay, say the whole night long. We'll go in reverse order from what we did in the beginning. That means we'll start with Mr. Navarro.
A minute. Thank you. A minute. 30 seconds has been a challenge. I first want to say thank you for the opportunity of, of coming here and letting me speak. And I hope that within the 30 seconds that we have, you can get an understanding of where we're at and what we're trying to achieve and what type of council person we are. With that being said, I'm, I'm very proud of Tempe. I'm from Tempe, born and raised here in Tempe. I've seen the growth in Tempe, changed the landscape. And I've seen the, the landscape have positive effect in our community, positive effect on our parks, positive effect on our schools. And, and the thing is, we have a vibrant city. We have a city that every city wants to be. And I'm very proud of it. And I'm very proud of the fact that we're, I'm a steward of the money and I'm a steward of making sure that our resources and our programs are better and far better than any other cities. I'm, I'm also proud that our employees that work here are, are being taken care of. And they're, and we make sure that our employees are happy to work here within the city of Tempe because that translates into the services that our residents get. With that being said, I'm Joel Navarro and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Garland.
What I'd like you to take away from this forum tonight about me is that I am a proven leader, I'm a doer and I get things done. I like to bring people together to solve problems of all different situations. And I like to take the time to listen to our neighbors to find solutions to those problems. Every board or organization that I have ever been a part of has always worked in the black and I will continue to do that because I think managing and balancing a budget and being a good steward of your money is really important. And here's what I can promise you. The city council is going to be my only job and I have the time, the energy and the passion to work for you and with you to make city of Tempe better. I will respond to your calls and your emails in a timely manner. I will be more than happy to go and meet with you to have coffee or to go to your neighborhood meetings. And I will never forget in any time that I'm a council that I work for you. Please go to my website at garlithfortempe.com and look at my campaign and hear what I'm all about and look at the 40, over 40 people that have endorsed me and have supported me. So again, thank you so much for being here and please go to garlithfortempe.com.
Thank you. Ms. Close.
I envision a Tempe that promotes justice, equity and compassion in human relations. As a member of the Tempe City Council, I will champion building a sustainable community, improving quality of life for residents of all ages and increasing affordability. As an attorney, I will bring an analytical approach and a fresh and needed perspective to the council. I want to thank you all for attending and those who are watching at home for your attendance and for your thoughtful questions tonight. My name is Casey Klaus and I ask for your vote in the upcoming Tempe City Council election.
Thank you. Mr. Keating.
Thank you very much. I'm Randy Keating and, you know, I took office in July of 2016. And since then, I've been laser focused on issues that improve the quality of lives for, for all Tempeans. In fact, in that time, I've served on 27 working groups, which is two and a half times more than any other council member in the same time period. And that's because I took a deliberate approach to get involved in as much of the city as I could to make sure that I was effective representing you all at Tempe City Hall. I've served on multiple working groups addressing affordable housing, multiple working groups addressing homelessness. I've championed traffic and transportation options. I worked to accelerate our investment in our parks and our roads and, and made sure that we had world-class public safety in the city of Tempe. I have a proven track record of success. I've been pragmatic, I've been thoughtful, I've been responsive, and I've spent my time at City Hall building compromise and consensus over fostering conflict. And because of that, I'm very proud to say I have the support of every single sitting city council member and every council member who's ever served that's still alive, except for two, in the city of Tempe. So I'm Randy Keating. Please, please do me the honor of a second term. Thank you.
Thank you. As a moderator, my fear is the unknown. And having watched a number of the presidential campaign debates, as they call them, and what's been going on in Congress, I think my fears were well-founded. But I have to absolutely say that I have been extremely impressed by the quality of our candidates, the collegiality of the candidates, and, and to the audience. When we select somebody to come down, we don't know what question is going to be asked. And I think that all of the audience questions were, were timely, they were significant to city issues. So I applaud the audience for not going off the deep end and not applauding in the middle and rooting for candidates. It makes, it makes for a much better and, and cleaner forum. We should acknowledge the candidates for their willingness to undergo these kinds of grillings and also acknowledge the difficult journey that each has chosen to undertake in a quest to serve. Regardless of how you may feel about any of the candidates, it's important to know and applaud the effort, determination and sacrifice it takes to campaign for and then serve in public office. And for Tempe, we should be proud of the caliber of those who wish to represent us. And I also, again, want to thank the audience. We couldn't do this without you. And thank you for your attendance and for your very important questions. And to our forum sponsors and their representatives, a special thank you. Paulina Pineda, the Arizona Republic's Tempe reporter, and Chandler too, or I would, too many places to go. And Gian Cottrell, Chair of the Tempe Chamber. Erica Corn, right down here was, she's the Chamber Business Development Specialist. She was keeping time and never had to exercise the bell. Don't put that up for me. But show them the bell. Good. Thank you. And Sue Janki, Chamber Vice President, is way in the back of marketing and programs for all of her assistants. Ann Gill, Tempe Chamber CEO and, and President. And also to a man that you don't see, his name is Jason Wolf, and he's hidden in a room over offside, on the side there, running all of the cameras and the equipment that gets this thing on the air. So what happens next? To be elected outright in the March 10th election, a candidate must receive 50% of the votes cast plus one because there are only five candidates for three seats. That means the election on March 10th will be the general election and the new console will be decided. Vote by mail ballots go out to registered voters starting February 12th. And if by chance you're not registered to vote, you have until February 10th to complete that task. So we're going to take a quick pause to reset and we'll be back in about 15 minutes with our mayoral candidate forum. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.[1755.15][1755.15]